Inspired by the invitation of Lieutenant Manning, Grant, and the audience, please.
Stand and bow your head, please. Father God, we're so thankful for this glorious day you've given us. Father, we thank you for all the people that you've represented here this evening. Father, just be with us and we will go about doing the business of Camden County to benefit all of Camden County. In this we pray in your most glorious name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission under God, in the name of the Constitution of this world.
All commissioners are present.
Are there any amendments to the agenda? No amendments or pledges?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
First and second, all in favor? Motion carried. Brings us to the approval of the amendments for March 21st, public hearing and regular meeting amendments, and with a motion for the second.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, except the many minutes from March 21st. Any changes or anything, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Brings us to presentations. Ken, you got the question?
Yes, the first is a proclamation recognizing the month of April 2023 as National County Government Month. And the Camden County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2023 as National County Government Month and encourage all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities. And we will have this as part of the record and be providing things throughout the month. Thank you.
We have the North Camden Action Association, Lieutenant Gordon, Maple Ford Park.
Good evening.
My name is Pauline Haywood, and I'm a representative of the North Camden Action Association. And first of all, we want to thank you for allowing us to be on your agenda this evening. But our purpose for being here is to kind of get an update. On October 18th, 2022, we did a PowerPoint at the meeting, and we made a proposal for some items that we wanted to happen with the Maple Ford Park in Spring Bluff. And at the meeting, the then-chairman talked with Mr. Matt Zink over the phone, and we were to move forward with what it is we wanted to do. And he met with us on December 6th, and we went through the entire proposal that we presented at the meeting. And then he sent us an email confirming that, and also sent us a list of all the other improvements that had already been approved prior to our meeting that will be done. But none of them included the items that we had on the proposal. So the reason we are here tonight is that since the new council, amount of commissioners were installed in January, we just want to make sure that we're still in the same place as we was last year in October.
Matt Zink will help you out if you want to talk to him.
Okay. But I mean, we wanted to make sure with the commissioners, I know Matt is working with us, but I wasn't sure how.
He's keeping us abreast of what's going on.
Okay.
I just, I got his email here, if you want me to, I can read it. But he's definitely on top of it.
Okay. Well, that's how we wanted to make sure is that we were still in the loop and that we had not been forgotten since there was new people on the, as commissioners.
Have not.
We have not. Alrighty, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
This time we need a presentation by James Kaufman with a joint development authority.
Thanks y'all for having me, I appreciate it. I will apologize ahead of time that this is a little bit boring. This is just our update that we do every so often. Am I pointing this at the screen or at y'all? Okay, alright. It probably seems pretty self-absorbed to quote yourself in a presentation, but I wanted to share this. Every year, my board, by the way, my chairman's here tonight, Mr. Greg Lockhart, does a performance evaluation of my performance. And this is from my self-evaluation that I have to send them. I've never put anything like this in an evaluation before. And I'm not going to read this whole presentation to y'all, but I'm going to read this. We've spent most of this year working with companies already in progress like SG Blocks, PEMB, Plug Power, Foodie J, YNC Trading, QTR Development, and trying to get them to the finish line. To be honest, with available sites, workforce, and ongoing, oop, ongoing infrastructure concerns, we need to tidy up our house before we invite too many more guests in. We have issues to address with water and sewer in the cities, power capacity at all of our sites, and have been trying to get some, one site cleared for seven months. I'm hoping that talking with county commissioners in 2023 will position us to address many aspects of these issues in the next fiscal year. We're still meeting with many new prospects and responding to requests for information, but we have got to address some things before we are competitive for many new projects. And that's kind of where we're at. We're getting contacted by projects, we're getting contacted by the state, and the truth is, most of the time, our answer is, y'all, thanks for reaching out, Camden doesn't have what you're looking for. And it's a shame because we'd be a good location for a lot of these projects, but we're just, we're just not competitive right now. But we'll fix that, we'll get there. I'm not going to read to you all of our goals and objectives verbatim, but our first goal this, this year was to increase the inventory of sites we have available to meet the needs of varied industries. We're making some progress on that. It was actually in the county strategic plan, I appreciate y'all doing that, that we would perform an analysis of some property and come back to y'all with a recommendation and then proceed on hopefully acquiring some new property. That third bullet point is make a recommendation to y'all on April 4th, and here we are. Second goal was to work with the city of St. Mary's to continue development of the St. Mary's Commerce Park. Y'all remember, this is the former airport in St. Mary's that we don't call the former airport anymore. It's the St. Mary's Commerce Park. That's actually coming along very nicely. If you look at this bullet point right here, we've only got 17 acres left of that entire property that's not currently under contract. So that is pretty amazing considering that was 300 acres of property. We did have a goal to prep the largest lot in the Camden County Industrial Park, get it cleared and ready to market. That is 11 acres. We're actually working on acquiring two adjacent pieces of property to combine those and create about a 15-acre parcel. That's the piece of property we've been trying to clear for seven months. Just getting a land disturbing activity permit has taken us that long. It's, things are not quick. Am I doing that, Kayla, or is that something y'all are doing? Okay. Alright, there we go. Rather than build a spec building, this is actually a fairly new concept, I don't know why it took this long to kind of get developed. But if you remember back in the mid-'90s, the JDA built a spec building, and it's great, Foodie J is now located there, and it's had several other tenants along the way. But rather than take on that expense, one of our objectives this year was to develop a virtual spec building. That's something that's really catching on, is you, you get all the topo work done, the geotech work done, you get all the wetland stuff done, you get it designed exactly for that space, you get all the engineering done, everything but pull the final permits with the city. And when somebody comes calling that needs a building in that general size range, you can say, you know what, I can have this ready to go, we can get started in no time and have it ready in four to six months. So that's, that's hopefully going to put us ahead of the game. We're working with pre-engineered metal buildings in St. Mary's for that, they've got us a design ready to go, they've digitized that, we've already done the geotech and the topo and, and all that, so we'll be ready to pull the trigger soon and get that up on the website. This is helping with the new logistics and distribution part. This is the park happening on the west side of 95 at exit 7, on the north side of Harriet's Bluff Road. We've partnered with a group called QTR Development, they're out of New Jersey, to develop this. When they initially came to us, they were planning about 2 million square feet of warehouse space, warehouse and distribution space there. They have now acquired another piece of land nearby and increased their footprint on their original site. They're now up to a planned 3 million square feet of distribution space. They just did finish their, their DRI, their Determination of Regional Impact, through the Coastal Regional Commission, got them through that okay. The development agreement is drafted, we've got a copy, they've got a copy, we've got a few things to work out. But hopefully we'll be able to bring this to the board for a bond resolution in May. And I want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear to everybody, the commissioners and the audience, that when we talk about a bond for title, that's a cashless bond, that's not Camden County committing to anything. That is just a vehicle by which, in the state of Georgia, you give somebody tax abatement, the only way to do it is with what they call a bond for title. So we're not giving them any money. The county will actually, even with a tax abatement, that land will be going from growing pine trees to having 3 million square feet of warehouse on it, the county still comes out ahead. This, goal number two here, support new companies in Camden County. This, you know, really is always going to be a goal, and it'll be an ongoing goal, to work with these groups, Plug Power, Pre-Engineered Metal Buildings, SG Blocks, Specialty Structural Products. Those three there, PEMB, SG Blocks, and Specialty Structural Products are all at the St. Mary's Commerce Park, and they're all at various stages along the way with their engineering. Foodie J, again, I mentioned them just a minute ago, they moved into their new facility that used to be the old spec building. I think Sean, I know Ben, you were there, so a few of us showed up and had some good egg rolls that day at their ribbon cutting. Those guys are really doing great, making about 18,000 egg rolls a day, which is pretty Goal three here, to facilitate the establishment of Kingsland Tax Allocation District Number Two. So this is working with Sawyer Development and the city of Kingsland to get that tax allocation district, excuse me, established through the state of Georgia and get them ready to go, and that's, that's done. That, that process has been done. That'll be from the south side of Highway 40, across to the north side to Camden Woods Parkway, all the way, all the way to Laurel Island Parkway, and it'll facilitate a lot of both commercial and residential development in that area. And this is something that really, we didn't choose this, it's not like we woke up one day and said, you know what, we'd be a great place for a hydrogen hub, but the existence of Plug Power has sort of put us on a map of hydrogen projects, and so now they reach out to us. So we're working with Senator Ossoff's office and Southern Company, Georgia Power, and others on various hydrogen-related projects. We've got two hydrogen-related companies right now that are still in that confidential phase that we can't actually go into too much detail on, but they've come and looked at properties in Camden County recently. And on May 19th, at Coastal Pines Technical College, we're going to host what they call a Hydrogen Roadshow, where companies are going to come in and demonstrate different types of hydrogen-based technology. Senator Ossoff's office and Buddy Carter's office are going to send representatives to be there with us, so that'll be exciting. Now, I guess that's all I've got. I didn't even have my standard thank you, any questions slide. Thank you, any questions?
You got one more?
Oh, okay, thank you. It wasn't, it wasn't advancing, okay. Alright, so yeah, sorry, it's actually going to be a couple more. This is going into our project update. I'm glad I get this opportunity, I know the newspaper's here, because I have heard a rumor out there that Cumberland Inlet is dead, and Mr. Jacoby has, has gone away, that is not true. It has taken us two years almost to get through the modified DNR permit and modified Army Corps of Engineers permit, because we had a permit for this in 2018. And when Mr. Jacoby came in and changed the design, it all had to go back through the permit process. So that's reengineering and working with them on stormwater and literally everything else. It's taken a full two years. We got our draft permit from Georgia DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers about two weeks ago. There were several errors in the draft permit on, from their side, which was kind of surprising. We've sent those back to be corrected, and then hopefully, once those come in, Jacoby Development can actually get started. I checked with them this morning, and I said, hey, I know the next question is going to be, what are you going to start first? And they said, to let everybody know that the Marina here, and then the RV project that they're planning on, a portion of the St. Mary's Commerce Park, the former airport, those are the first two projects to kind of bookend the whole development. Referencing Plug Power again, if y'all have had the opportunity, they don't like you to linger there, but if you do have the opportunity to drive out to our industrial park at exit 7 and take a look, it's an incredible project, really amazing, their construction. But Pathfinder was what they called their first thing that they did here, that is done, it is built. And Peachtree Phase 1 is almost complete, they expect to be able, to be selling hydrogen out of this facility by this summer. We've got some water sewer issues to eventually work out as the property, or excuse me, as the project grows, but right now, it's operational. We just need to expand some water capacity as the project goes, because there's another phase of Peachtree to come next. But that's, that's what it looks like, and that's off Plug Power's website. Again, the St. Mary's Commerce Park, this Point Peter Road, Douglas Road over here, we are actually working with the city of St. Mary's to install this new road that will run from Point Peter over to Douglas. We received a grant from the state from 2.3 million, Development Authority of St. Mary's issued a bond to match that, and a little more actually, to help put that road, water, and sewer in. So right now, we've got PEMB that's building their facility here, SG Blocks building their facility here, Pigmental Studios, which is an animation studio group, has this under contract, this is Specialty Structural Products, they're going to build right here. So this is all we got left. We've got some little pieces here and there, but the city wants to keep those, because they make good places for lay-down yards and things like that after a storm. But this is about it, that we've got left, is one contiguous lot, not, not a whole lot. And then Kingsland, tad number two, just an update on that. You should see that on the, the final development agreement on city council agenda for Kingsland sometime this month, but the rest of it's all done. It was approved by the state as of December 31st, 2022, and this is the layout, with 40 here, Walmart over here, Camden Woods Parkway, running north all the way up to Laurel Island Parkway up here. This is what we're doing for the remainder of the fiscal year. We're going to get Cumberland Inlet going, get them finally through their permitting, get the contract on some future property that we can develop, get that virtual spec building done, hopefully see the development agreement for QTR Development, that 3 million square feet of warehouse space get approved, and then work with y'all on our budget for next year. Now I'm done. Yeah, that's it. Any questions?
Any questions?
So it's about a 30,000 square foot thing, and they're going to employ 25 to 30 people to start off with. Thanks for reminding me about that.
Also, the $3 million, or 3 million square foot warehouse, I ride by there quite often. I want to see that land start clearing, and that's not the seven-month waiting on land, is it?
No, no, that's not. The, the land that we have been trying to clear and trying to clear for seven months is in our industrial park, this is, the lane you're referring to is right across the street from that, and will actually front up to 95, so they'll have visibility from, from 95 with that. And just to be clear, that, they're going to do that 3 million square feet in four separate buildings. So they'll have a 300,000 square foot building, a 600,000 square foot building, a million square foot, a five, they'll have about four buildings, that'll make up that 3 million square feet.
And it's still a spec building?
Exactly. Yep, yep. As of right now, they don't have identified users, unless they've worked that out, and they haven't told me yet.
James?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your report, and thank you for what you do for the economic development of Camden County.
Thanks.
God, I think I'm a little loud here on this microphone, thank you, sir. I don't want to blast anybody out. Now that we're going to have a lot of money that was formerly going to some project that is now not going to occupy a lot of our money, you mentioned we need to know that we're in business, seeking business. What do you think we need to provide? And before you answer, let me tell you what I think it is, based on some of the education that the county has gracefully and graciously sent me to, and listening to other economic development gurus in the state. And that is, rather than build a spec building, which you did not propose, that we build a cleaned-off, infrastructure-equipped parcel of land sufficiently large enough and with the ability to expand and say to the state of Georgia, send people down here to look at this. We have site ready, we have pipes in the ground and electricity on site, and we are right next to the interstate, and we have a deep water port to the north and the south, two of them to the north, and one of them immediately to the south, and an international airport within a few minutes' drive. So come down and look at us. Now, what do we need to do as a commission with the money that we're going to have to help you, to help you get along there? Is that what we need to do?
The, the end product that you described is exactly what is, is making so many of our peers successful?
Say that again.
The, the end product that you described, that, that piece of property that's cleared and infrastructure's delivered, and it's close to the interstate and ports and the airport and all that, is exactly what's making many of our peers successful. It is.
Then let's do it.
Yeah, I guess I was going to say, regardless of how we get there, you know, whether it be, you know, a combination of funds that we have on hand and some bond financing, or whatever it may be, we can figure out a way to get there together, but, but that's, that's really, that's the recipe for economic development, especially in rural Georgia, is to let the powers that be know that this is here, get it out there, market it. And, you know, Plug Power is a perfect example. We don't, we don't pick the industry. We do to an extent, I mean, we set some limitations, we don't want this, we don't want this, on, on either end of a scale. But we make the product available, we market it, people hear about it, and, and they come and locate in, in your community. And that's, that's really where, where we're at, it's just, we want to make that happen and make people know about it, and we'll, we'll land something good. Our, our peers are seeing it up and down coastal Georgia.
Absolutely.
Y'all know Hyundai especially, and then all the suppliers related to Hyundai. Glenn County acquired, I don't know how many, well over 1,000 acres of land right on, so it's my peers in Glenn County, right on the same exit as the Port of Brunswick, that they're already in the process of delivering infrastructure to. They, they announced that on, I don't know, I guess it was probably a Tuesday of one week, because the next day, we have our standing meeting with them on Wednesday. The next week, they had five different prospects for that property. That property will be gone in no time. And that's, that's just the key, is making people aware you've got land for them.
Well, I appreciate that, I think you and I both are right about this, and I want to go on record tonight as saying that this is going to become an item that replaces some of the things that I've been bringing up at these meetings, because we've made progress on some of those things. So onward and upward to the next thing, and that is, regardless of how we have to motivate people and create a sense of urgency, it is past time to create that sense of urgency and to go back up to Atlanta or wherever we have to go and say, we are doing this, and we want to see the list of people who are looking for exactly what we're talking about. We're, we're just beautifully situated for it, in every respect. Thank you again.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Bring us to the first public comments section. Public comments will be limited to three minutes and on agenda items only. Anybody ready?
Thank you. First.
Rick Manning from Bullhead, I've got a few on agenda items I'd like to address real quick. First one, resolution to dissolve the Spaceport Authority. Well, that's a gimme, it shouldn't have ever been there to begin with. Alright, 30 grand for the Woodbine Library, we're here again. The people want the, the commissioners to give the 30 grand without no strings attached. They're doing a good job up there. I went to the last meeting with the Three Rivers. Amazing what they're doing. Alright, now, thank JTA, that was a great presentation, I appreciate them. And on that subject, here we are, on page 19 in this budget amendment, 62,000 more for Spaceport Special Appropriations. That's on top of the already quarter million dollars you got appropriated for. That's a, over $300,000. Boy, it'd go a long ways to get in the business with them. Now, enough of that. Item 12 on there, noise reduction at Two Rivers Gun Range, I'm here again about that. We've been neglecting it, y'all know it was designed poorly, we're neglecting all the data unfacts, except for what was in this little book. There's plenty out there. Here's a 100-page report from the EPA about what noise does to the environment, all the way down to a little caterpillar. We can ask hundreds of people that have been out there for decades, what it's already done to the wildlife in just a little over a year. Now, you can ignore the problem all you want to, the problem is not going away. We're not going to stop with this problem, I'm not the only one. If we need to keep pushing forward, I'll push forward, and we're going to extend it into other things. We know already what you're doing out there environmentally, safety, and health-wise to the patrons out there. I mean, hell, you posting pictures of it right there on your Facebook page, people eating and drinking right there while you firing off thousands of rounds of bullets. That's a no-no. So let's don't get into that, let's fix the problem, and then people are going away and leave you alone out there. Fix the noise, period. You're spending $251,000 a year on salaries out there, almost $30,000 for insurance. TV ads, $17,000 a pop. What else we got in it? Radio ads, $5,000 a pop. And that list goes on on those ads and goes on. I've got them all right here if you want to look at them. And we're buying polo shirts for the range master, out of our tax money, polo shirts. Come on, folks. I could go on and on with what's going on out there. Yeah, you present that little budget like you're going, making even out there, that's way beyond the truth. I know it, I've got the data, let's do something. We can spend all this money, we can spend it out there and fix the noise. You're killing our ecosystem. It, yeah, oh, well, it ain't done no harm. It takes decades to do it, little bit at a time. Y'all know this, I know this, the data's out there, do a little Google search. Better yet, go to DuckDuckGo, because they're unbiased with their searches, and you will see the data out there, going all the way back to 1971 on the noise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Terri Keller. Terri Keller from the great city of Kingsland. I'm calling this, why we need to, excuse me, dissolve the Spaceport Authority. It's all over, except for the shouting. The $60,000 question, well, the $12 million question is, why in the world are certain members of the Camden County Board of Commissioners still spending money like it grows on trees for a spaceport that will never go anywhere? Let's follow the money, shall we? And find out just who's driving this crazy train. It seems like everyone and his brother has gotten the message that this, what has essentially turned into a scheme at this point, is never going to work. Yet money is still being used to pay lawyers to fight this lost cause. For example, we are never going to win against Union Carbide to recoup any of the money already spent to buy horrendously toxic land, because legally, the time in which we were supposed to buy it ran out. Why are we then paying lawyers to keep on fighting? We don't have this money. We don't have this money, so instead of recouping funds, we're doing the opposite. Whose idea is this? It seems like it's not someone who has Camden County's best interests at heart. The homeowners who live on both Cumberland Island and Little Cumberland Island are not going to move, so we will never be able to launch rockets from that land. So why keep paying lawyers to defend the issuance of the Federal Aviation Administration license? It was issued illegally because it didn't meet the requirements needed to actually issue a license. The lackadaisical FAA just cut corners, left a lot of spaces blank and called it a day. So the environmental groups who are suing the FAA for doing such a shoddy job are going to win and we are going to lose. The taxpayers, that is. We're going to lose because someone insists on continuing to pay, pay, pay lawyers to fight losing battles. All of the commissioners have a responsibility to the citizens of this great county to do the right thing by them. And the right thing, obviously, is to stop immediately wasting money that is not yours. It's ours, but you're treating it like it's free money you found on the ground. No, we worked for it. Camden County right now could be benefiting in many, many ways with these funds that we pay you to manage and direct in a responsible fashion. To the remaining commissioners who are beating this dead horse, you've given it your best shot. You've done your due diligence, but you're way past that point. It's time to listen to your consciences and not to whomever is encouraging you to pay legal fees until the Camden County taxpayers are broke and broken. Here's an example of what I'm talking about. I recently read a comment on a Camden Facebook page that one concerned citizen was quote, feeling helpless about all this going on around here. A fellow commenter replied that she was probably in the majority. This is not what the best of commissioners want their constituents to feel about how they're doing their jobs. You want us to have confidence in you and be happy with what you're doing. Stop listening to those who advise you in ways that lead you in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else wish?
Yes, sir.
Anybody from the public wish to speak?
Janet Heath, unincorporated tax district person. How fun to speak to you in April and National County Government Month. Fifty-five thousand of us citizens need to interact with you five who have been elected to represent us to come up with the appropriate way to spend our funds and to run our county. And we do appreciate your taking the steps to get in the position to do that because it's not an easy job and someone has to do it. I want as an advocate to ask once again that you reinstate the thirty thousand dollars that you took from Woodbine Public Library in Mar- in May of twenty twenty-two. We were told repeatedly throughout the year, especially by our, our own district chairperson, that this money could be, the budget could be amended and this money could be reinstated. So we're making good progress, I understand, with a memorandum of understanding, working through Three Rivers. We appreciate all the effort that Three Rivers is putting in as our supporting managing agent. And we hope that you will work with them to come up with this memorandum. Then we will be prepared to go to the twenty twenty-four budgeting session and receive the funding that we need anew. But please, please, please reinstate the two oh two three funds as we were promised that they could be reconsidered. I've given you three sheets and a packet. One has the monies, the breakdown of the monies that come from the state um, to serve the different things in the library. It goes equally to all libraries. Just under thirty-five thousand dollars is the share for Woodbine Library. That is more than what this county is giving to this library, so please reinstate that money. Then at our regional meeting, there was an explanation of the jeopardy that we may be in because the county is not funding us. And there also is a page that shows you that our Camden County Library risk cuts, that our county cuts one check from Camden County Library and for Camden County Library and Woodbine Library. It goes into the Three Rivers as one piece of money, so we are a part of Camden County Libraries. And you can see it in the audit sheets. Please reinstate our funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Camden Councilor, City of Kingsland. I agree it's a little bit ridiculous at this stage to have Spaceport Camden Authority removed but for exactly the opposite reason of the first person. During this past week, it was announced that Cape Canaveral has been fully assigned. The future growth of the American space industry is dependent upon Camden County. If y'all remove the Spaceport Authority, I imagine within forty-eight to seventy-two hours, it will be known in China because the future growth depends upon us. There is no place else in Florida. Wallops Island is the only other place on the space cor- on the east coast of the United States. We have an advantage over them. They would have to build just the same as we do for additional launch facilities. If you launch from the North Pole, you have no advantage. If you launch from Cape uh, Canaveral, you've got a little over nine hundred miles per hour advantage due to the spin of the earth. We are just slightly below that. It drops considerably by the time you get to Wallops Island. We can compete. We can get people here if we can get certain people off the back so that the county can proceed to develop that property as it should be. There are only two families living on Little Cumberland Island. The others visit, many of them haven't even built houses. They visit a lodge. They're there very seldom. They think by paying taxes on an eighty thousand dollar property, they ought to be able to control the counties being able to bring in millions of dollars with the development of a spaceport. We need to move forward with Spaceport Camden. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for the board? All right. Seeing none, at this time, we need to adjourn the regular meeting and convene a public hearing. I have a motion on that.
So move.
Second.
Well, we got a first and second. All in favor? Motion carries. Turn it over to you, Joy.
Request to rezone four point five acres from agricultural forestry to multifamily residential R-two zoning. This property is located in District Five on Joseph Way in Kingsland. As you can see here, this is an aerial view of that parcel that is requesting for the rezone. This would be an overview of the parcel with the location and zoning of the parcels that are around it. Now, the owner is requesting this rezone so that they may subdivide this parcel for family. An R-two zoning is considered low density multifamily, so planning commission recommends approval on this.
Does anybody from the public wish to speak in favor of this item? Come, please come to the podium.
Yes, I'm the owner of that property, Beatrice Chivalier, and I would like for it to be rezoned for a family.
I am speaking to the microphone.
Yes, I say I'm Beatrice Chivalier and I'm the owner of that property and I would like for it to be rezoned to a family.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, Joy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the next item will be a request for special use approval to allow a manufactured home in an R-two zoning district. This parcel is located in District Five on Joseph Way in Kingsland. This is the parcel previously asking for the rezone.
Anybody wish to speak in favor of this item? You don't have to come back up if you don't want to. We got you. Anybody wish to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none. Uh, we'll move on to the next item, Joy.
Uh, the next item will be a request to rezone three acres, three acre parcel, or three parcels that total five point, point five seven acres from agricultural forestry to single family residential. These parcels are located in District Five on Manning Lane. As you can see here, this is an aerial view of the parcel being highlighted. Uh, the parcel that's uh, uh, adjacent to the top of this and the one below it is the three parcels that are involved in this at the end of Manning Lane. This is the overview of the zoning and the location uh, of the aerial parcels that are around it. Now, the owner has submitted a recombination plat that totals of these three point five seven acres. So in theory, this, this is making the situation better, going from small acreage to point five seven acres. Therefore, planning commission and the health department approves of this.
Okay. Does anybody wish to speak in favor of this item? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, Joy.
The next item will be an ordinance amendment. The Unified Development Code Amendment is proposed to create consistency with current building codes and trends within the county. Currently, Unified Development Code does not allow permanent power or utilities before the certificate occupancy. So here is a couple of slides that shows the wording we will be deleting in the sections twelve forty-four two B and twelve forty-six, section one. Up top is how it reads now, and you can see the words we will be deleting. The bottom will be how it will read now. And staff recommends to approve.
Part of the reason why we want to do this is um, if you're building a house and, and you're doing hardwood floor, you want to have the power on so you can turn on your air conditioning and, and get that wood acclimated to that environment before you lay it down. If you lay it down without doing that, you could have problems. So this is one of the reasons why we want to do this. So does anybody from the public wish to speak in favor of this item? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none. All right, now we need to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting. Now get a motion on that.
So move. Motion to adjourn the public hearing and resume regular meeting.
Second.
Second.
Well, we got a first and second. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, this brings us back to number one, Joy.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The first item will be a request to rezone four point five acres from agricultural forestry to multifamily residential, which is an R-two zoning. This property is located in District Five on Joseph Way in Kingsland. Planning Commission recommends approval on this.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve this item.
Second.
Got a first and second? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item number two?
Item number two will be a request for special use approval to allow a manufactured home in an R-two zoning district. This parcel is located in District Five on Joseph Way as well, so planning commission recommends approval on this.
I'll make a motion to approve this item as well.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Item number three?
Item number three is a request to rezone three parcels that total point five seven acres from agricultural forestry to single family residential. These parcels are located in District Five on Manning Lane. Uh, planning commission recommends approval on these.
Can I make a motion? We approve this item as well?
Second.
Well, we got a first and second. All in favor? Motion carries. Brings the item number four.
So this item is the Unified Development Code Amendment. It's proposed to create consistency with current building codes and trends within the county. Currently, the Unified Development Code does not allow permanent power or utilities before the certificate of occupancy is issued. Like I showed you, there's some slides that have the changes we'd be making to these, to this ordinance. Staff recommends to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve this item.
Second.
Discussion, please. Casey, in your example, did you say that if we adopt this amendment that it would assist with seasoning the wood in place or would it?
Before you place it. When you're doing hardwood floor, you know, the real hardwood floor, not that laminate stuff.
Right.
You got to put it in the, um, basically in climatized environment to suck out any moisture or anything like that before you lay it. If you lay it before that, it could warp on you.
Okay, so in this case, if we adopt this proposed amendment, are we making it better for laying the real McCoy number eight oak floor or are we making it worse for laying it?
It'd be better.
Be better. Thank you. Thank you.
I, I've got a question, uh, I guess for Joey or Pete. Um, I mean, we, we weren't having issues with this because normal procedure is once you get your electrical, you know, trim out done inside a house, which is typically eighty-five, ninety percent completion, you call for a pre final inspection. And then the power company will, will hook up the meter and, and all that. Um, this is probably just getting us in compliance with how we're actually operating.
Yeah, this is getting us in compliance because right now it reads as the pa- permanent power cannot be issued before the certificate of occupancy is issued.
Okay.
So we're changing it to be allowed before the certificate of occupancy is issued.
Which is typical, yeah. Thank you.
All right, we got a first and second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Brings the item number five.
Good evening, Commissioners. This agenda item, for your consideration, is for the final budget amendments needed for the fiscal year twenty-two budget. The amendments are for the general fund and are needed uh, prior to audit completion. After all year-end adjusting entries have been made and a review has occurred, budget amendments are made as necessary to balance at the departmental level. Uh, the state has issued an extension on filing our audit until June thirtieth, but I expect it to be completed by mid-April. And the amendments are to special appropriations and public works as detailed in your agenda packets. And I'm recommending and finances recommending approval of the budget amendments.
Okay. I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve as presented. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir. On the fiscal year twenty-two, and my screen just went blank, there was an adjustment for the um, spaceport in the amount of approximately thirty thousand dollars increase. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Over a base amount of nine hundred and something thousand dollars?
Correct.
Okay, and on the fiscal year twenty-three, there's an adjustment of approximately sixty thousand dollars or fifty thousand?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two thousand dollars over an initial budget item of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So in essence, we're looking at almost a hundred thousand dollars increase in spaceport allocations in the larger definition of the word. I think it's more specifically attorney's fees.
Well, for fiscal year twenty-two, those, we have to balance each department, um, the bottom line, so the actual expenditures have to either equal or be less than what is budgeted. So in special So in special appropriations, it's actually over budget in fiscal year 22.
So Claire, we're not spending any more money. That money-
No, there's no money being spent.
It's just an accounting function to get the books to balance.
Correct. Just making the numbers fit what was actually done.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Who has check writing authority and for how much in this county?
You mean who approves the invoices, or invoices are approved at the departmental level?
Okay. Who has oversight on a day-to-day basis of signing off on that in the administrative sense beyond the departmental level? In other words, my question was, and I worded it incorrectly, but you corrected me and I appreciate that, who can spend the money in this county?
Well, spending happens after a budget is approved by the Board of Commissioners. So any spending is typically in accordance with that budget. After a director or a department manager approves an invoice, it's sent to my department, and we check it for appropriate approvals and process the payment. Each month, we review a budget and send the expenditures out to each of the departments. So all department heads can review what their expenditures actually are compared to what their budget is. I also send it out to all the Commissioners, and I send a detailed report out on a quarterly basis to the Commissioners.
And if a budgeted item is, you know, purchased or that goes through, if it's above, is it $25,000 comes?
We have internal controls in place where if an item is fifteen hundred or more, it has to be processed through a requisition. Anything over $10,000 and below $25,000, both the county administrator and I have to approve. And if it's above $25,000, it comes before the board for approval.
Okay, so, so you can, you can adjust it up to $25,000 between yourself and the county administrator? Up to $25,000?
Not, not adjust it. That would be a budget amendment. If it's a budgeted item, they can spend up to that amount.
Spending authority up to $25,000?
If it's a budgeted item.
If it's a budgeted item?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
And, and it's good to see you here in person, by the way.
Thank you.
All right, we have a first and second. All in favor? Show your post. Motion carries four to one. Brings the item number six.
Yes, the next agenda item for your consideration is the changes needed to the current year fiscal budget for the general fund. And the budget amendments detailed in your packets are necessary in order to accurately reflect revenues and special appropriation expenditures in the current fiscal year. And Finance recommends approval of those amendments.
Get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve item six as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Get a second?
Second.
Let's go. Any discussion?
Sure. So unlike the fiscal year 22, this one for 23, how much of this money has already been spent versus, I guess, or has all this not been spent?
No. Each one is really a separate item. What I'm adjusting, if you'd like me to go through each one, I'd be happy to do that. If you'd just like me to explain the spaceport one, I could do that as well.
Yeah, let's start there and, you know, see what that $62,000 is going to cover.
Again, we have to balance each of the department budgets on a departmental bottom-line number. And right now, I need to do that adjustment to the spaceport line item because our expenditures actually have spent $294,000, and we had done a previous budget amendment of $250,000. So in order to balance that, and I did put a little bit extra in because I know that there are some outstanding invoices out there, so that is what makes that up. It's the actual plus a little bit extra.
Right. And this is strictly due to pay for the litigation?
Correct.
Yep. And with this one, is this one specific to a certain litigation case?
No.
No, okay.
Well, if you remember, we estimated $250,000 to cover this.
Right. Yep.
This is not us defending ourself at all. This doesn't have anything-
This is just catching the budget up to what the actual expenditures are today.
Well, part of that, part of that expenditure has been spent on defense for litigation to where we didn't have the option to not defend ourselves, correct?
I would say that.
Yep.
That's a valid statement. All right, we got a first and second. Any more discussion?
Yes. How do we stop spending?
Stop the litigation?
Get rid of the litigation. Yeah, that'll do it. Okay, get rid of the litigation.
Yeah.
Okay, this is why I'm not going to approve this. But go ahead with your vote, Mr. Chairman.
Got a first, second, all in favor? As opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
All right, this brings us to number seven. Chief Smith?
Good evening, Commissioners. You'll be happy. This won't cost you one thing.
All right.
I come before you and ask you to approve the mutual aid agreement between Camden County and Glenn County. Right now, we do not have a mutual aid agreement. As you know, we do help Glenn County out a lot, but I try not to make sure we don't jeopardize our citizens on the north end of the county. And like I said, this is no cost. We helped them out on the fire they had at the plant a while back. You know, they really appreciate that. So we kind of help each other. So I'm asking you to approve this mutual aid agreement.
We get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief Smith. I understand the big fire in Brunswick, and I understand the value of mutual aid agreements. I won't spend a lot of time talking about it, but as a former volunteer fire captain, we went to other counties and other counties came to us.
Yes.
What I see more often happening in Camden County is we're running across the line to the north and taking care of business for Glenn County. I don't think they're coming to our aid as much as we're coming to theirs. What I would like to, I'll let you say something in a second. What I would like to see is an analysis of what the numbers are in terms of how we routinely cover shifts for them, but we're not asking them to routinely cover stuff for us. None of that. What I like to see end in jeopardizing a mutual aid agreement. We need the mutual aid agreement. So if you can, not contingent on the vote tonight.
Yes, sir.
But if you can provide that information for a subsequent meeting, I would like to see that because then we may have to address the situation where we, we talk about, okay, mutual aid is one thing, being South Glenn County is another.
Yes, sir. And Chairman, just to, you know, you are absolutely correct. At any time, they have called us before, but we was down to like two squads in the county, and we just can't send help. So I totally agree with you on that right there. We do have a running track of how often we do respond to Glenn County, and they have before come and assisted us. They also came and manned one of the firehouses there at Station 17 on the north end, but I totally agree with you on that.
As, as we have gone and manned their stations.
Yes, sir. That is correct. Yes, sir.
And when it's, when it's a, the fire like at, at the industrial port there, yes, sir. Let's go help our neighbors.
Yes.
But if you've already done that analysis, if you could just shoot that to me by email-
Yes, sir. I'll make sure I get it to you.
And take a look at it, and I'll probably be satisfied with what you've done, Chief Smith.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, we got a first and second. Those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we get to spend some money, Bill, right?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to ask permission to buy ten Harris radios on the state contract to support Chief Smith's mutual aid agreement. Chief Smith does not have the ability to talk to Glenn County because of disparate radio systems. Glenn County is currently on an 800, 700 megahertz system, and we're currently on a VHF system. They do not have VHF. We do not have 800 as of today. We are in a process of upgrading our system to 800. So these radios that we're buying in advance for Chief Smith's mutual aid agreement is going to actually go forward towards the, the new radio system for Camden County. So request permission to buy ten radios for Chief Smith.
Get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second. Any discussion?
Of course. So I understand that we're doing this so that we can talk to Glenn County?
Yes, sir.
Is there any other use for those radios that serves us?
Yes, those radios will be dual-band radios, and they will support us on our current radio system and support on the Glenn County radio system.
If you bought those radios without the dual-band system to accommodate Glenn County's need, would they cost less?
Yes.
Okay, let's figure out what they cost, and let's go to Glenn County and say, listen, guys, you're a big county and you're very well-funded, and we're doing this for you. So how about you give us some of this money so that we can help you? I see Chuck getting up behind you. Don't let him sneak up.
Commissioner, good evening. Thank you. Yes, sir. Good, good, good dialogue here. So first, let's back up. These radios are not supporting a Glenn County MOU. These radios are first and foremost previously approved by the board utilizing ARPA funds for the purpose of Camden County upgrading and migrating to new technology that we should have been on 10 years ago. So as we move to 800, 700 megahertz, the radios we're buying now, we're simply buying a little bit aggressive on the timeline. Otherwise, we'd buy them 90 days from now. So it just happens to fit that it does support the MOU for mutual aid, but it's not exclusive of that. This is really about Camden County. And we all should know that St. Mary's leaned into 800 megahertz a few years ago, and we have had a difficult time making our VHF system talk to theirs, making patches, and it's been a failure. And it's been a failure that we're lucky it hasn't cost us lives. So this is the right thing to do. This was previously approved by the board. This gets us the right technology at the right time. And now let me give you the closing piece. This is very important. We're not going to move away from the older technology, which is analog VHF, and here's why. It's a failsafe. It gives us the ability to use something that is tried and true in this county. And by the way, and I think our Sheriff's Office would validate, you'd have to work really hard to not find coverage for deputies standing on the side of the road today with that VHF system. So it's souped up, it works good, and it's going to complement the 800. And oh, by the way, it also ensures that through mutual aid for Brantley, for Charlton, for Glenn, and for them coming to us, that when they come in and Charlton County, they'll be VHF forever. They'll be there forever. So now they can talk to us.
How does it interrelate with Nassau County? Because, you know, if we have a-
Yes, sir. Perfect. Thank you. And, and absolutely. Another big partner, we're bookend by Glenn and Nassau. Nassau comes to us, we go to them. This puts us on the same level of technology, finally, between the two bigger counties that kind of bookend us, which is Nassau and Glenn. So, and Duval. We'll be able to talk to Duval County. So this is a, this is a momentous thing being lifted by federal funding, and so it's a great day for Camden County.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I thought he sold it to say we're going to do it in County.
Yes, sir. No, sir.
Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Anything?
No. Chuck covered it all.
All right.
All right, we got a first and second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
This brings us to item number nine. Appointment to the Camden County Board of Elections and Registration for District 2. That's you?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Clara Harden to the Board of Elections and Registration for District 2 to assume the vacant position and to serve a term of four years.
Second? All right, we got a first and second. That's to appoint Clara Harden to the Board of Elections and Registration. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We're going to give Mr. Reddick a little bit of time to get back in here before we go to number 10. All right, we waited on you.
Did you hear us?
All right, this brings us to item number 10. Resolution to dissolve the Camden County Spaceport Authority?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The reason I brought that up is because I think it's time that we, as a Board of County Commissioners, send a, send a- The word escapes me.
Message?
A message. That'll, that's good enough. But I, I think it's actually, the word is resolution to Stephen Zanes, to dissolve this spaceport authority. It's, at this point, useless, redundant. It's not legally composed at this point because members' terms have expired. There've been no meetings. There is no progress. There is no continuing need for it. I think it will send a message to the citizens of this county that we're moving on from this, and we're, we're moving in the direction that Mr. James Lachlan clearly, Coughlin clearly laid out that we need to move in. And so I would like to make a motion that we send a resolution to the legislative representatives, one and all, to dissolve the Camden County Spaceport Authority, to sunset it.
Well, one thing, I don't, I don't think we have to do that. We just don't fund it. And we don't appoint any other members to the board. Unless you want to fund it. I don't want to fund it.
I don't want to fund it.
Or be on the board. Do you want to be on the board?
Yeah, we're going to appoint you on the Spaceport Board.
Well, first thing I'd do is dissolve ourselves if you did that. So yeah, I'd, I'd accept that appointment. Put, throw me in that briar patch.
So I, you know, unless this board appoints two of us to that spaceport authority, and unless this board votes to fund it, it's basically dead already.
There is no authority, right?
On paper, there is, but-
On paper, there is, but then we've got an authority called the Industrial Development Authority. It's on paper, but it does absolutely nothing. So unless we fund it, it will do nothing, and there's no plans to fund.
This is for discussion, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we got a motion. Anybody want to second it?
What, what was the motion?
The motion was to do a resolution to dissolve the Camden County Spaceport Authority. Am I correct?
Correct.
All right, we got a, we got a first. Anybody want a second? All right, it looks like it's going to fail for lack of seconds. All right, we'll move on to item number 11.
Me again. Resolution requesting the Public Service Authority to conduct a forensic audit of all credit card purchasing cards transactions from July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2022. That's a motion.
Okay.
Second for discussion.
Oh, why are those dates?
Because I think it encompasses a period of intense activity that needs to be looked into.
Okay, um-
The audit, the most recent audit completed, when does that date fall off?
Okay, please say that again.
The most recent audit that has been completed, when, when is that through?
When is this through?
What date does it stop?
October.
October of last fiscal year?
October of 2022, right?
2022. And it is done, and it's a clean audit.
Right.
Was it a forensic audit?
It was an audit done by a certified auditing firm-
It was an audit done by a certified auditing firm in the state of Georgia. The question specifically and respectfully is, was it a forensic audit?
Could you explain the difference between a forensic audit?
Is more detailed. It's more thorough. It goes, it branches out further. It tries to determine many other things. And if Ms. Gonzalez is here and wants to put words to the explanation, I'd be delighted to have her come up and explain that. Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, the audits for the first three audits that were done after the scandal was discovered were a forensic audit. And in talking to Sheriff Proctor the other day, he made the comment, "Why should we do this and pay for it when we've got a resolution with the prosecuting attorney's counsel that has a budget that, you know, if they investigate it, they have the power to do a forensic audit if they want to." And it would come out of their budget and not our budget.
And why can't we make a resolution to the Public Service Authority for it to come out of their budget instead of ours?
Because we fund them.
Because we fund them. It'll end up being the taxpayers' money anyway.
You know, that definition changes every time. You need to look at it a different way. Sometimes we're responsible for them, sometimes we're not. So, Ms. Gonzalez, do you have any words for this?
Well, just regarding the forensic audit versus a, what would you call it, just a regular audit, it would just be the amount of testing that's done. Many times, if spending is, I'll just use an example of $100,000, maybe testing would be 10% of those receipts. A forensic audit would be much more than that. I do know that the auditing firm, I believe that through fiscal year 17 at PSA, I thought that was a forensic audit. So for the period July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, I believe that was part of Clifton, Leford-Hardison and Parker's forensic audit.
Well, how much is a forensic audit as compared to an audit?
Well, the county's audit, annual audit for everything, solid waste, all activities, is about $55,000, I believe. And this is really off the top of my head, but I believe that the forensic audit at PSA was more than $90,000. So it's much more expensive.
So it's almost double, right?
In that case, in that example.
And we would have to pay for that if we did it?
Somebody would have to pay for it.
Typically, I mean, essentially, this is almost belaboring the point to where if you look at item 14, we're making a resolution to the prosecuting attorney's counsel. You know, if there's a forensic audit level done, I think they should be the ones doing it. And not necessarily about the money, but it's about, you know, we're too close of a party to the PSA since we fund them. So it'd be better for a third party unrelated to county, you know, government to come in and look at those books.
PSA is funded by the county in all three cities. Those are funding source. All right, I'll modify the motion. Resolution requesting the prosecuting attorney's counsel to conduct a forensic audit of all credit cards, and I'll change the date to July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2022.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion on that?
So this would be basically a second?
Paying for it, right? Somebody else paying. We're not committing to pay for it.
Well, basically what Mr. Goodman is trying to do is tell investigators how to do their job. That's the way I look at it.
Well, apparently somebody needs to because they let our sheriff go up there and talk with the Attorney General and he never informed them that he was in the wrong office months after the fact. So, yeah, I don't mind telling them what to do. You're going to tell them to pay for it while you're there, right? Yeah, sure. Why not? It's easy enough.
Commissioners, if they do come back and request that the county be the funding authority for that forensic audit, how would you like to handle that? Bring it back before you...
Let's handle it if they do. You notify us and we'll handle it at that point.
Yes, sir.
But I wouldn't even hold that possibility out to them.
To who? The prosecuting attorney's counsel or the PSA?
We'll be sure to call the cities, too.
To either one of them. We don't have to tip our hand to anyone that they have the opportunity to redress that. First, it's got to get approved here by this board.
Well, you know, personally, I think it's, you know, prosecuting attorney counsel, you know, when they have it, they should be able to look at it and do their investigation. The sheriff's office has already done an investigation on it. So I don't really see the need in it. But we got a first and second. All in favor? Those opposed? All right. This goes on to item number 12.
I'd like to make a motion that this commission, that this Board of Commissioners, commission a noise reduction modification program at Two Rivers Gun Range.
Can we get a motion on this item?
That's the motion.
Okay, with a second. Excuse me.
I'll say.
Okay, any discussion?
What's your recommendation?
Recommendation is that we commission modifications at Two Rivers Gun Range.
You know, I brought this up during the strategic planning session and, you know, I was the only one that brought it up. At that time, you basically said that at three miles away, there's no way it would be a nuisance. But if you want, you know, you change your mind, that's fine.
Well, let me say this.
But I don't have a problem doing this.
What happens to me is that sometimes I get additional information, and watch this, I am able to change my mind.
Really?
And it's an amazing process. I highly recommend it. Yes, Mr. Brant, I can do that. I can change my mind.
That's evident. That's evident, sir.
And that's fine. I take that as a compliment. Thank you.
Not so good for that.
Do we have an idea of what the cost would be on this and what the funding source would be?
Whatever it takes. It was poorly designed. It was over budget for a lot of reasons, but it certainly is a nuisance. Call the vote. It lives or dies. I don't care.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor? Those against? Our motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend, from that motion, that the Budget Committee look at this for the fiscal year 2024.
I agree with that.
Yeah, it'd have to be because there's no money to do it now. And just to clarify what you just said, for the fiscal year 24?
Yes, sir. There's no money budgeted currently, so we would have to set aside some funds for this.
And we've never amended the budget before, so let's not start now, right?
That's up to you all, if you'd like to do that.
No.
Well, we're going to move on to item number 13, update on the report of the MOU for Woodbine Library.
I believe our county administrator has provided us some information on this. I asked him briefly before the meeting how he felt about it. There are some finer points to work out, but I think there is progress on this. Do you have any words for that, Mr. Boatright?
No, sir, other than we just received it late this afternoon from the Three Rivers Regional Library Director, Mr. Moxley. So we're still reviewing it. I've, you know, read through it, just perusing it, but I think we still need to kind of go back and obviously get some more feedback from you all. I think some of this, this is the first time y'all actually have an opportunity to see that. We passed it out. You know, you got it right there in front of you. But as we move forward, just getting feedback from each of you, there may be some discussion tonight that some of you may want to interject with, but there are just a few items in there that we'll need to kind of go back and forth with the Three Rivers Regional Library System on.
Has anybody had discussions with the city of Woodbine since we have last brought this up? No.
Last time I talked to them, City Woodbine didn't want any part of it, even though they created the library.
Me and Mr. Moxley, we did talk about that briefly, and I think there was probably some interest on their part to go back and discuss that with Woodbine.
Okay.
Whether what happens out of that, that's dependent upon their conversation.
One thing that I see in here, if Woodbine does contribute some money, then I have no problem getting funds out of the unincorporated area. But if Woodbine doesn't fund any money, it needs to come out of the general fund so that the citizens of Woodbine actually pay a little bit for their library. All right, any other discussion on this?
No, I was going to say that, I mean, that makes a lot of sense for those reasons. And then, you know, but also if it comes out of the general fund, citizens in St. Mary's, you know, are also contributing and paying. Trying to think of... Had a thought, but it must not have been for it, so.
Well, I'll do it. It's a public library. Anybody from anywhere in the county and outside of the county can come and use it to... All right, any other discussion on this item? Moving on, this is an update on the communications to prosecuting attorney counsel in regards to PSA investigation prosecution. It's been less than, well, a week since we've sent it to them. I don't know if we've heard anything back from them yet or not.
No, sir, not today.
Anybody here from the sheriff's office?
I spoke to him last week.
Here's my concern. Do we know what the tolling is on the statute of limitations on the prosecution for criminal activity on this, on these investigations? Do we know definitely what the statute of limitations expiration is, considering that it was extended?
I have no idea.
Chuck.
Oh, sheriff's got some dialogue tomorrow with Chief of PAC.
Can you come up to the podium, Chuck? That way we can be recorded.
Chuck, you were hiding. I couldn't see you back.
Deep cover.
I'll get you.
Sheriff has some more communications tomorrow with the chief of PAC on that. As far as the actual date of the tolling of statute of limitations, I don't think PAC knows. Attorney General does not know. We believe, if I believe, that it is sometime in September, which is coming up pretty quick. Sheriff's going to have some more tomorrow. That specifically, we need to know, when is our drop dead date? And so far, PAC, the dialogue with them has been good. I'm hopeful but skeptical.
Well, Chuck, if they don't know, if PAC doesn't know and the Attorney General doesn't know, let's tell them what it is.
I'll get a motion for that.
Yes, sir.
September of never. No statute run that.
September the 32nd.
Yeah.
All right, this brings us to reports.
There's no changes to the calendar at this time?
County Administrator comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So today, the county held its property auction. It was actually very well attended. I think we may have even had over 100 folks in attendance. But the four properties that the county surplus back in September of last year, all four of those were sold. Just waiting on a couple more of the individuals to come in and sign or receive their quitclaim deeds. Just a few calendar updates for you all. The tour of the Resiliency Center is this Thursday at 3:00 p.m. Please don't forget about that. If you have the opportunity to come out toward that facility as it's under construction. Our Citizens Academy, for those of you that are in the audience or watching online, applications are currently out for that, but that will start April 20th, so just a couple weeks away. Our Budget Committee meetings, those start next Friday, not this Friday, but April 14th. And obviously, those that are on the Budget Committee, we got quite a bit of documents to go through, budget requests. So I look forward to that. Also, out at the gun range, we are hosting hunter education courses on April 18th and 20th and May 16th and 18th. Other than that, that's my report.
Thank you, Sean. All right, this brings us to additional public comments. We're limited to three minutes. Any registered speakers, Ken? Anybody on the public wish to speak?
June Maxwell, unincorporated Camden County. First of all, let me just thank you all very much for assisting me with a couple of issues in the very near recent past. I appreciate, you and I appreciate your staff. I do want to mention to you this library in Woodbine. Let's talk about the operative word being unincorporated. Let's talk about our children up at the North End who need access to this library in Woodbine. I told you I wanted you to get a big red bus and have it all equipped, ready to roll, so that people could have access all over the county, actually, not just the North End. But I do ask you to please reconsider unincorporated North End with access to this library. It's very, very difficult for these folks to get all the way into, even to Kingsland, let alone St. Mary's. So thank you for your consideration.
Anybody else from the public?
I'm here for good news. I'd like to thank you all for finally looking into the nuisance problem out there at the gun range. And I look forward to it moving forward so I can quit coming up here and raising cane. Thank you very much.
What was your name, sir?
Jim Goodman.
Touche.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Yes, sir.
No.
Thank God you walked, Robert.
Mr. Goodman, please.
Yes, sir.
I'm John Coburn. I live in St. Mary's. I may be wrong, but some dollar figures were mentioned, 62, 63,000 for 2022 on the budget amendment and 25,000 for this year. And it sounded like these were lawyer fees. I couldn't really tell. But I was listening. Listen, and there's also another quarter of a million budgeted this year for the spaceport. And it sounded like those were lawyer fees. Well, I have a couple of thoughts on that. On the March 21st meeting, there was an agenda item to discuss termination of the county attorney that was taken off the agenda in the beginning of the meeting. And what Commissioner Brant had to say about it was that we've hammered it long enough. Well, I've been coming to meetings since the new commission was seated in January, and I haven't heard any discussion about this money that's being paid or any information about these lawsuits, these lawsuits that we're spending this lawyer money on. I know in general that the commission tried to thwart the will of the voters on purchasing the toxic waste dump. And I know there's another lawsuit having to do with open records and releasing of information related to the spaceport. And if anyone was at the last meeting, I brought up how I felt we got bad legal advice for both of these, and I wondered to myself how much it cost. Well, I think tonight we found out a little bit about how much these foolish things that we were advised to pursue legally are costing us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Clint Moxley. I'm the Director of Three Rivers. I just wanted to come up and thank you all for considering the MOU, which we are in discussions about. I submitted it back to Mr. Boatright this afternoon after our regional board meeting last week, where our regional board had the opportunity to review it as well. Some of the changes which I had outlined in there were suggestions and/or questions which members of our regional board also brought up. I did submit it back, and I just want everyone here to understand that as a working document. I look forward to discussion in the, hopefully, the very near future with you all about coming to some sort of agreeable terms. And I would also hope and ask that possibly at our, at the next scheduled meeting, that we may could actually come to a vote on it, you know, pending an agreement. And I look forward to working with y'all, you know, for years to come as well. But thank you again for reaching out with a MOU for us and giving us the opportunity to maintain this library. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? All right, seeing none, at this time, we need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and convene executive session for the purpose of discussion of real estate, non-spaceport related.
So moved.
Second.
You got a first second, all in favor? All right, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I've got an appointment, an important motion to make. Make a motion we adjourn?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're done.
Right.